All right, welcome everyone. We will begin tonight's work session. Well, let's jump right in. Welcome to those who are here. Glad to have you here to participate. So with respect to item number one, we've got construction of West Lofer. So as we saw in our last council meeting, we're not exactly seeing eye to eye with Summit Creek on when that's to start, the construction and completion of West Lofer. So as we talked about it in our staff meeting, and this is something that I hope to get some discussion on, but I just don't know that there is a high level of value in us waiting for Summit Creek to complete its part. And so I would propose that we do our part. And then I think that there are reasons that we can offer incentives to Summit Creek to finish theirs, but the way I see it, we've got this large chunk of money that we borrowed. We're paying interest on it. We are just sitting on it. And I don't like it to be in somebody else's hands as to when we can pull the trigger and make that actually, at least our portion of it, complete. So anyway, I would ask you to consider that we move ahead with our portion and use that money while it's at its current value instead of, you know, the value that it will be in a year or two, which will be likely diminished. And the costs will be higher. And then it's not us putting our destiny in Summit Creek's hands, so.
You're saying we do it to the line and then just?
Yeah, we just extend that line a little bit and not finish it. We talked to, is Corbett here?
Yep.
Oh, there he is. Okay. So and one of the things that Corbett mentioned in our staff meeting was like really the only economy in doing it together is the transport, right? Isn't that what you were saying, Corbett?
Yeah.
Mobilization, yeah. And I mean, it's a couple of thousand dollars, which, you know, there's nothing to sneeze at. But I mean, I can't predict what the value of our money that we're holding on to will be next year, but I think there's a very reasonable likelihood that it will be more than $2,000 less valuable, so.
Well, the cost has gone up significantly.
Yeah.
Just asphalt cost, road base cost, construction labor, all that. And it just keeps going up. So I agree with that.
Are these funds footnoted on any legal or contractual obligation for West Lofer?
There is not much. That's why we have to, I mean, we have to be team players, I believe. And so, but I mean, they're still obliged to do it. And I think that, you know, we can give them reasons to want to do it sooner rather than later.
Okay.
But as far as us saying you have to do it now on our terms, there's nothing like that.
Okay. I was just wondering, is there, you know, maybe instead of extending a road that still would, you know, like doing something, you know, half-baked, is there somewhere else in the city that would have an equal need that we could get complete 100% done?
That's a great question. My biggest, my biggest problem with the way it currently is is that we've got borrowed money and we're just sitting on it. And it's costing us and we're getting no benefit from it. So I mean, I, you know, that's the council's call to make as far as where to utilize that resource, but.
Is that a question for Corbett? Is there another road?
Well, Skylake for sure has a lot of needs and has always had a lot of needs, but nobody drives over there, so they don't recognize it unless they're going for an emergency.
But the one thing I will say is that, I mean, at some point, we'll have to finish West Lofer because Summit Creek is going to have to finish its portion of West Lofer, and so.
No, I get that.
Are we still looking at the agreement that we looked at a while back? Kind of the, not the low bid, not the high bid, that middle round? Is that what we're talking?
Yeah, it would be Ted's recommendation is we do the middle of the road approach.
Just the middle. That's the only part of the road that you can drive on.
Could we incur additional costs if they don't do their part for, say, a year? Are we going to have to come back in and then fix that?
Would it be like Northview Circle?
Piece or?
Well, I mean, yeah, there's certainly a chance that, I mean, it's the same chance that we face now. I mean, you know, none of us are promised any number of tomorrows, so I mean, that's the same.
Well, I was thinking if you pave it up, right? Is there an erosion piece? Or, you know, if we fulfill our piece of it, are we going to then dump more money once they start to show up to finish and connect the two pieces, right?
Well, again, that's their property.
So are we extending ours all the way up into their property then?
Yes.
Yeah, we would feather it out, right, Corbett? Is what basically you were saying. I mean, so there would be some overlap and then they would just tie into that.
And why 150 feet, Corbett? That seems like a fairly long piece considering we're doing only, what? How much on our side? On our side? So how come we're going to do another 150 onto their side? Oh.
Yeah, that's our full portion of it.
Our, okay, it just said extending approximately 150 feet. So I thought that meant in addition to our 150. Okay. So it's just extending on the property line into theirs, feathering it out. Okay. That makes more sense to me.
Yep.
The other thing I really wish is that we could make it a through road with, and maybe with Summit Creek's permission or whatever, we might lay some road base or something where we quit. Is that an option?
It would just be a question of who pays for it and.
Well, we would pay the road base just to keep it in our lines, maybe try to collect later, but.
But they're not meaning for it to be a through road. They're meaning that part to be a private road, right? They're putting a gate there.
No, that'll be a through.
A through road to Summit Creek Drive.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Because that, there's a lot of reasons for that. We have a safety zone excellent over there that we really studied and looked at and was like to make it easier to get there.
Yeah.
If money were out of trouble, you know.
I mean, I think that we could separate those two issues and decide, do we want to pay our half? And then do we want to incur the additional expense to just kind of, to use the?
Or ask them if they would put the?
Now-tired expression, put lipstick on a pig.
But why can't we ask them to do? If they're not going to do the full amount, why can't we ask them to do the, at least the road base to make it for safety?
We can ask them to do anything, but they're not obliged to do it.
Right, for safety reasons, because it's for their residents of that HOA connecting.
One other thing that Wayne and I talked about this last week was at some point, they are going to want to do the development as we've, you know, been through not only the development agreement, but the preliminary plat on that road. And we can make the completion of that road contingent upon finishing that plat as well.
Okay.
So I mean, we're not completely out of leverage and they need that road as much as we need that road. Anyway, yeah, I think it's, for them, it's just a matter of timing.
And then, Doral, to your point, I mean, I, you know, that is something that we could certainly look at just as a safety future. But I think that the things that we would want to consider though is if we're putting something down, is then that's something that's going to have to be torn up before they can do their final design. And someone say something?
Oh, well, it seems like you start with road base, don't you, to make a road? But that's how much I know.
I mean, it seems plausible to me, but it's out of my league house.
True. But it'd be better than mud, right, Ted? You know? Okay, so you're.
Is mud the name of your town? A small town of mud?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably easier to plow. Mud? No, paved roads.
Paved roads are much easier to plow, yes. I need less dental work after a paved road than I do a dirt road. If we do go forward with this, who in the, who of our staff would be managing this project?
Well, that would be Corbett and Ted, right? I mean, it would be.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you've already started this.
You're too slow, Ted.
First, we have to finish the design. I guess the decision would have to be is entire design or just designing this portion? And then print it out to the contractor, et cetera. And usually within that hole, provide some oversight.
Perfect.
As part of that, if you can get involved in the oversight.
And on the design piece of it, I think that we can reasonably expect Summit Creek to kick back their half of that. But what it's not doing is it's not holding up construction while the cost of everything goes up. So we get the design. Yeah, we're in it a little deeper than we need to be or should be, but at least we can move forward with, you know, what our obligation is for that piece. So.
I am all in big favor of this idea.
Great, okay. Well, and I would like to actually put it to a vote. I mean, because we have the information that we need, I believe, to do our part, so I.
Well, and now's the time.
Yeah, I think so.
Even though we can't do the outside work, we've got to get the design done. And just getting bids lined up takes sometimes months.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think we should wait if we're going to do it.
Maybe once we start doing it at Summit Creek, we'll say they want to go ahead and do their part.
Yeah.
Because it'll look bad, I think, if they don't do their half. It'll look bad if they don't.
Do they have a parade of homes home this year? Because that always seems to get more of their homes, their lots sold.
I don't.
Heard of it.
I don't know.
Wayne, Corbett, do either of you have anything to add to inform the decision?
And they'd like. They'd like Ted to repeat what he said too, because they couldn't hear him.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind.
Jody and I had a meeting with Summit Creek on this and other related things a week and a half ago. And they're going to be including some additional lots from a previous subdivision in their Phase A of their development, including some lots that are tying in to West Lofer. And they've agreed to include West Lofer in their preliminary plat. So when that comes forward for approval, that road will be part of that. So they will, that will be leveraged then, so to speak, for them to move forward and in a more timely way, address that road rather than, we'll get around to it sometime.
Because they won't be issued any building permits, right?
Correct, they'll be restricted on building permits for the lots along that road. And they willingly did that. So I think, I guess, as a look at things, where I would hope that that would, what the city's going to do would be an incentive for them to do it sooner rather than later.
And what's the bonding process on that? Have they already put a bond up for that plating?
Not yet, they're working.
Or they'll need to?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, and updating the bond is part of kind of the overall vision of this.
It is, yeah.
Perfect.
So.
That helps me a lot. Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne. All right, Ted, will you come up and say what you said?
Yeah, yeah, that's the most important.
Ted Mickelson from the town.
He likes mud, he said.
Now accept your award.
The Constitution has suspended it this year.
Well, you said we needed engineering done.
Yeah, so related to the project, I mean, really what to move forward is to finish the engineering portion of the project. We've got a kind of preliminary design, the LEI, for the entire road. Just got to take that now, finish it out. And then finish the design and provide part of the construction oversight services we provide as well.
Perfect.
Oversee construction, along with.
All right, I just want to think, follow through the cracks, any runaway expenses, things of that nature, so.
Good question. Okay, thank you. All right, well, if we don't have anything more to discuss on that, then we'll move on to item two, city grants.
No report from me.
Okay. Craig, you're here. Any updates on fire grants?
Uh, just waiting.
Craig said he was just waiting for those who couldn't hear and Craig's refusing to come up to the microphone, even though he knows better.
April.
Perfect.
April.
And the trails grant?
Um, we'll do it under PTR. Or do you want to do it here? I don't care.
I think this is already existing grants, that new grants would be under.
Well, no, this, the grants is, the reason we have it as a standing on it is just so if there are new proposed grants, let's hear them.
Okay.
Because I'm going to get mine under my.
Okay, well, we'll keep a list.
I just think it fits better when it's not in the board agenda.
The Parks Committee would like to do a grant to build three benches on Switchback Trail and install two bulliards at the base where it starts rising, not at the base of the trail, but up where it rises. The grant is, will be submitted to the Utah Outdoor Recreation Committee Grant Program. We're going to request $5,000. Sherry Berger's writing the grant if we get approval. The cash outlay to the city is going to be $1,250 out of that $5,000 grant. And that'll just pay for hardware and the benches and so forth. The installation and so forth is going to be part of the in-kind services that's part of the grant.
So is the $1,250 in-kind or actual cash?
Cash. So the $1,250 is how much money the grant will require of the city. And it's reimbursable, so we have to do it and then get reimbursed for it. And we have 18 months to finish the project. So it's something we'd like to be able to do this summer because if we wait till next, you know, we could probably do it in 18 months. We didn't get it.
So they're not considering the in-kind work done as part of the match?
Yes, they is, they are.
I think that's what, that's what she was asking.
Yes, okay.
Is that that $1,200 could be paid?
Labor in-kind plus $1,250.
Well, usually it's one or the other. So I just wanted to be sure. They have both labor and an in-kind? I mean, in-kind labor plus cash? Oh, I've never seen that before.
So and then the labor, you've got that all sorted? So there, and I'm just wanting to look at the reception areas. If the laborers don't show up, then?
He's right there in the bush.
I'll show up. I've already got one bench track record, so we're good so far.
Straight?
I think, I haven't been up. It's still, you know, the one at the park is still buried pretty good.
So the in-kind match is valued at what price? And then, so $1,250 in-kind and $1,250 cash? So 2,500 basically total for the, so that's half of the grant is actually. It's one for one, okay.
And when's the money? When does the city have to pay the money?
18 months. So we pay for it first and then they give it back?
They reimburse all but the $1,250.
So we pay the whole thing out of pocket? And so when's, so that's just as we're building it then, I guess?
Right.
Okay.
And Mayor, we do receive about $1,000 each year from Utah County for parks by way of a grant cash that if the council wanted to use that money as this part of this down payment, that probably fit well in there.
Great.
Awesome.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, if you'll, and Corbett had a comment too, yep.
The reason that PTR is looking at this grant, it fulfills recreational, meaning the bench is on 2, 4, and 6, and it's the same bench as Jeff's bench on the top, so they'll all be the same. The bollards allow on the portion of the trail there by toolers, where the sign is for the trailhead, the ordinance that you pass to be enforced for the 50 inches. So this is a way to enforce the ordinance that we've created. Let's see, the other thing is because it doesn't have to be completed for 18 months, the water bars portion can be done in the fall. We're going to propose that water bar maintenance be done every October. And that way, we can shut the trail because there's snow and the water bars will be tamped down by the snow.
Also, there has been some damage to the trail because of the avalanche. So sometime this summer, we're going to need to do some repairs where the trail has kind of slid a little bit. But we're going to have to wait until that melts, which might even be all the way to June or July.
Well, and that's DNR property. That's not our property. So we'd have to approach DNR and see what they are to do.
They have tasked us with maintenance of the trail. We can ask them if they will come and do it, but they will probably say that that was part of the agreement with us originally was that we would maintain the trail.
Because we're putting in for the water bars because they're really almost nonexistent right now, so as if this was something new, because these grants will not pay for ongoing maintenance.
Yeah.
Thanks, Sherry. So I suppose that, so we don't have it as an item to vote on tonight, so this will be voted on next council meeting?
Sherry, when is this due?
It's due Friday. So we have to probably do a preliminary.
A straw poll?
A preliminary vote and then ratify it.
Yeah.
Because it's due Friday.
Okay. Well.
Corbett.
Yeah, please. Yeah, come on up.
Will you make the bollards removable?
Yes.
Yes.
We thought we'd do one of them removable?
Yeah, I think we need to make them both removable just in case you need to have something larger for any reason at the water tanks.
That's fine, I think that was the plan.
No, this is up above.
This is above, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it where those four-by-four posts are currently installed? Is that what you asked?
Okay.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
And.
And Corbett wanted to say something.
He did.
More? It's your report's turn, so you've got to come up anyways.
Yeah, Public Works, Corbett.
Look at the envelope. Corbett Stevens. We've won.
I don't have anything to report. Sorry. I mean, status quo on the water. Snow plows, the orange truck is down. The snow blower's broke. I've got a replacement already, but I don't know if it works yet.
So this is the one we were talking about this morning? That, oh, so it didn't even make it through the day?
Nope.
Was it hitting that inner?
No, I mean, we, I mean, Craig and I looked at it. We might be able to fix it.
This one of the white trucks?
No, the snow blower.
Oh, the snow blower.
It's attached to the Kubota.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's, it's not, it wasn't built for what we're using it for. And so we're just doing the best we can with it.
Where are we at on our snow, on our snow trucks? Last time we were, we had one down and we're expecting snow tonight, so where are we at?
Both of the mid sizes are good to go. So we'll be fine, and the service trucks. So we have three plows that can hit it.
All right, thanks, Corbett. Wayne, planning commission?
One matter that I wanted to bring your attention. Several months ago, Guerrero family, and they're here tonight, made a request for a zone change. And they came to the council and referred to the planning commission. The property currently is zoned as R1-2. And they requested a zone change to an R1-1 and dividing it into two different lots. Problem is that that puts it outside of the R1-1 because it's smaller in acreage than an R1-1 allows. So there's an alternative, and I've talked.
Can you remind us of the location just so we are familiar again?
It is on Woodland Hills Drive, 550 South Woodland Hills Drive.
Who's your neighbor?
We're across from the Clayton's.
Across from, yeah, just down one from the Clayton's, right? Go up one from the Clayton's.
Yeah, between Valley View and.
Dale?
Yeah.
Yeah, Valley View.
Okay.
Yeah, on the right, going down the hill.
So what I've talked to them about is rezoning to R1-19 with the understanding that they would not make the division of the two lots smaller than what they want right now, which is, point, one is .91 acre and I think .93 acre. So that. And they've agreed to do that. Before we went through the whole process with a public hearing and everything else, I just kind of wanted to get an okay from the council for that process to go forward and not spend all the time in doing that and then come before you and say, we recommend a R1-19 and the council says, no, we don't want to do that. So I just want to get kind of your blessing that you're okay with us going forward with an R1-19 with the understanding that there won't be smaller lots in there than this, one is a .91 and the other is a .93 acres.
What are the other lots all around them?
They're basic, a lot of them are one acre. It's zoned for two, for two-acre lots. So there's a few that are two acre, quite a few between one and two, and a few at one, so.
The important thing is there's no R1-19 anywhere in this vicinity.
Correct.
Because as I recall, R1-19 isn't anywhere in this subdivision.
Lot A or B.
We only do R1-19 up around the park and then I think Summit Creek also has this.
Summit Creek and Robert Nelson subdivision, correct.
It would definitely be not, it would not match.
Right, and.
The zoning wouldn't match, but the acreage would.
So.
Yeah, it's closed.
Would this be?
They're just a little less than one acre in there.
Were any of the neighbors object? Have they?
No, we've talked to all of them and they all seem to find that. A lot of the ones around the area that are zoned for R1-1 are right under an acre. A lot of the ones around the area that are zoned for R11 are right under an acre, so it can imagine what we have all around us.
And I don't know how that happened, but it did.
I can tell you how. When, when it was really originally plotted, they didn't use regular survey markers. And so the original developers of town kind of, kind of went through and they, they surveyed and and everybody thought, okay, we have two and one acre lots here. And then as we started building in the 90s, all of a sudden we had property lines that were going like this or property lines going through somebody else's house because the survey markers were all off. So they did some adjusting to make that not a problem and they all, there's quite a few that are just under one acre, but they're still considered R1.
Do both lots have frontage on Woodland Hills Drive?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt you, but we do need to make the public record. So can we get a microphone?
Come on.
Thank you.
So it's basically a rectangular lot on Woodland Hills Drive, and so we would just be splitting it in half. And so it would be two corner lots that are just about an acre each.
Is your plan to potentially sell one of them?
No, so our plan is to keep the one home as a long-term rental, like a year or more, and then build our home on the other one.
Because there's an existing home already there.
Yes.
So it would turn into two?
It would turn into two homes.
Perfect, okay.
And I, Wayne and I spoke about this. There will be some restriction in terms of the zoning that would prevent a future landowner from carving it up into considerably smaller lots, correct?
Yes, so we thought that we could do, since we're an R12, which is two acres, and we're a little bit less than that, we thought we could do an R11 and kind of fit in there. But Wayne explained that we can't do an R11 and the only option would be to do the R119 and then put some sort of stipulation on the plat, or however that would work, just saying that it could only ever be the two lots.
Yeah, is that, is that how we would do it, Wayne? Is we would actually, when it gets plotted?
We'd put a note on the plat.
Put a note on the plat.
For agreement, yes.
I have no problem with it.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Actually, one other question for you, Wayne. Is there any water requirements that would need to happen? Does, would more, or does the paper water just split down to the middle?
No, they would have to provide another share of water for the second lot.
And you guys are aware of that?
Yes, a .9 acre.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful.
Good question.
Yeah, that's good.
So, okay, we'll go forward with that then, from the public hearing and so forth, and report back to you.
Very good.
Thank you.
And these would be the only two lots in between the two roads. It's only one lot right now and two roads, so it doesn't go on and on.
Okay. Item 3C, Councilmember Hilliard, Public Works, Roads, Parks, Trails and Recreation.
Just kind of hoping Mark would be here.
He's online.
Oh, Mark.
He was, I don't see him now.
Oh, now he's gone. Okay. Well, we did have a meeting with Public Works. I think it was a fairly productive meeting. We, we discussed a lot of our different prioritizations. And I thought we had talked about Mark coming and presenting it, right? That was what my, my plan was, so if he comes back, maybe we'll turn some time over to him. But we went over kind of two different wings of the prioritization model. You know, one is if money wasn't an option or wasn't an issue, what's the prioritization? And then what if the money, with the money being an option, what would then that change to? And so then they'll, they will be getting back and presenting that to us. But.
Great.
For the most part, very, very good productive meeting there. And then Parks, Trails and Recreation, we mostly just discussed this in our last meeting. We went over that, and then I'll let Janet cover anything else that I missed. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilmember Kinniston, Public Safety.
Thank you. Chief Northup, a while back, appointed someone very intelligent as our training officer for Woodland Hills Fire Department. And with that introduction, I want to turn a little bit of time over to Ted because he has found something I think is really valuable for our department.
Great.
And we want you to be aware of it. Guest speaker.
It lowers mine, doesn't it? So in looking at department training, right now, we have kind of two aspects. We already have record keeping part of training, or we have keep records for compliance with ISO and some things we got to comply with. Also, we have just training materials that we use. And QGATE has been done a lot through various spreadsheets and Google Drive spreadsheets and shared spreadsheets and multiple spreadsheets, as well as just searching YouTube and internet to find training videos and stuff like that. So in an effort to try and organize this, we started looking at Chief Doral and I started researching some, some way to kind of organize this into a better platform. So we've been researching training software and researched multiple avenues to do online training software. It's a program you sign up for. So we kind of narrowed it down to one, and it's a training software. And they provide online training for multiple aspects. They, they have online training material, meaning courses you can take, videos you can, you can watch thousands of them. Materials that comply with ISO, materials that comply with NFA, so we're getting the right training through certification agencies. But then in addition to that, you register each of your fire department members and you can track all of their training with it. So we can track compliance with some of these organizations. It also saves time when we're reviewing this, you know, here, wherever, with ISO certifications, where we're at, where we train and not have to try and pull all this from these spreadsheets and track ours. So it's kind of an online training platform. It can also be shared, all of our fire department members can sign up for it and we can send out trainings to them via videos or courses or stuff like that that they can do at home. So I think it provides a much better training platform for our department members. They provide ongoing support for us. It is a subscription, you can sign up for an annual subscription that we sign up for.
How much is that?
It is, it roughly works out to be $57 a person that we sign up. For our department, we're looking in the neighborhood of $1500 a year. So we're excited about this. Doral's had a chance to play around with it. They did give us, we had a demonstration from the company around Colorado a month ago, and they gave us a password sign-in to let us just mess around with it for a while. So we've been, we've been using it and looking at it for a while and it seems like it's, we think it'd be very recent, just a way to monitor our firefighters.
I exhausted the whole demo site.
What's it called? What's the?
It's Fire Academy.
Fire Academy.
It also contains an EMS portion that we would consider later. It, it would really be good as well, but Salem, we kind of depend on them to keep those records since they transport for us, so we're kind of holding back on that portion. But I am really excited about this because it's a place where we can, we can prepare a training, the videos, the handouts, the whatever presentations we do in our classroom, it can all be put on this website so that it can be repeated by those that miss it. And so it's just got so many super tools that, he likes the record keeping. I like the fact that you can store your training somewhere that are, that are repeatable. And, and as new members join, wow, we just say, hey, go look at A, B and C and you're, you're caught up to, you know, a few of us, so it.
You build your own training, their training. So I think the greatest, the greatest uses ever will be just like watching. Because right now, we have no way.
And so now, now the next best thing is, is it will cost the city any more money because we have it in our budget for this year. And so, so I, we think it's a really wise decision to go for it and, and try it for a year, committed to it.
That's great. Well, I would assume that Greg probably has to put some administrative time in terms of making sure that.
They.
ISO certifications are all.
Oh, yeah.
So if this is all automated, that would.
Yeah.
Probably shave at least $1,500 of your time off each year, say nothing what's already budgeted.
How is he intended for this? With ISO, just documentation?
The other great thing about it is it is web-based as well as it has an app comes with it, so that gives each firefighter person a chance to, to learn on their own speed and, and we get records of who did what. So anyway, it's a really good deal.
We did do some research. We reached multiple platforms. I would say there's one other out there that's comparable, it's about $30 a person. So I think this is the best.
What is the name of this platform?
It's Fire Academy, is who puts it out.
So it's got the B-list actors as opposed to the A-list actors?
Yeah.
That might be a step up sometimes.
You're very responsible for our captains, your trains.
It's like a C.
Thanks, Ted. That's a great find. Doral, anything else?
Uh, no, thank you, Ted, for doing that. He can explain it better than anybody.
Well, he is highly intelligent. Is that why you?
Yeah, I might take that back, but for now, we'll let it stay.
All right. Councilmember Lunt, I do want to again offer our condolences publicly for the loss of your father, so.
Yeah, thank you. So I don't have anything other than Wayne and I went and met with Elk Ridge City today. They were wanting to talk with us, and I think that this has been a prior discussion that didn't, you know, didn't, nothing came of it, but they wanted to talk to us about being able to connect our trails together with theirs. They'd like to eventually have a trail that went from Woodland Hills through Elk Ridge to Payson is the goal. And Elk Ridge has kind of come up against lately, you know, they used to have a lot of four-wheeler trails and a lot of places where you could ride, and that's all been on private land and the private landowners have shut it all down. So now they have nowhere that they can ride and a lot of, it's just, there's not a lot of access. So Elk Ridge is working really hard to look at some trails and they would like us to participate. I don't know if there's really an option, but what they're looking, what they were hoping for is coming out of Lofer Canyon, that somehow we could connect to a trail out of Lofer Canyon. So Wayne has a map. We met with them. We can put it on the, the master, master plan for a possibility, so we're going to coordinate with them a little bit, but probably anything that would be a possibility would be a budding residence property, so probably won't happen, but we can, we'll certainly look at it and see if there's some possibility. So that's all I have.
All right, well, thanks for taking the time to look into it. Councilmember Malgivich.
I think she needed to use the restroom.
We can, we can just jump to Pratt. We can, we can do Dave and then come back.
I had a visual.
Oh, okay.
And I had put it in the council room and I went, oh, it's my turn. I forgot that my visual.
We moved on to the next item.
And also I have to, I have to work because Ted, I'm going to go with emergency management first because Ted's here, but he has to leave to go to Elk Ridge in case he has any questions. There's a lot of things going on with emergency management. I'll give most of that in our, in our town hall meeting of what we're doing in preparation for flooding, what's happening with avalanche, all of that I will give there. But recently, like late this afternoon, I sent you documents. As you know, our post-fire mitigation projects, after it was assessed, initially, right after the fires, was, was then divided into two projects. The one that we've already completed, the basin and the channel work, and then the possibility of a basin and channel work over protecting the water tanks. That grant that was given was told, we were told it would be 100% covered. A few months ago, they came back and said, we will cover 100% except for the culverts because they go under roads. And, and so we all went, ah. So we've been working with Congressman Owens to try to get this figured out. We have the opportunity for what's called a pre-disaster mitigation grant, PDM for short. Our total project is $2 million. That would include the basin, the channel work, et cetera, as well as replacing 17 existing 12-inch culverts that are under private driveways. We would, we would then replace those with 24-inch culverts and replacing four existing, also 12-inch culverts under public roads with 24-inch culverts. The road repair for each of those culverts would be part of this grant. Now, our portion of the match of this $2 million project is $50,000. That $50,000 can be done in kind or in cash and is payable over the 36-month period of time after the grant is awarded. So they're hoping the grant will be awarded by the end of the year or at the beginning of next year. And then we would have 36 months to, to help work with the culverts if we already are doing work in the property or whatever. That would, that would be. The, we are doing this in conjunction, just like last time, it was kind of an overall county. The covert problem is only a problem with Woodland Hills and Payson. So we are going, we are attempting to put this application together for both cities. The problem that we have is that the application, we found out, is due Thursday. And so everything's in place for this. There is a draft letter that was given to us that I sent to each of you or that the mayor would need to put on letterhead and sign. We've talked, the mayor and I have talked with Chris, and I think he's on there in case there's any questions with regard to the finance. And I have Ted to talk about if there's any questions with that. This is just to go forward to say, yes, we want to be considered for this grant. You can't do the overall project without the culverts and we can't afford the culverts because the culverts in and of themselves are tens of thousands of dollars, right?
A few hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Including, I think it was 17 driveway culverts.
Ted?
Yep. It's 17, 17 private drives and four city. So these would be culverts that we would probably, probably already need to replace anyways as a city budget item, but it's, it's $20,000, a $200,000 covert project that would be included with this $2 million post-fire mitigation project.
Yeah, yeah, so what, I mean, the backstory is real quickly. We went to the NRCS to do all this project, right? And they fund 100% of flood mitigation work. The local state NRCS group is starting to submit a lot of watershed plans is what we're working on to what they call their watershed management center, which is the national center that all the NRCS projects get sent to for review. When they were started sending these plans to the National Water Center, they started coming back and saying that culverts underneath are considered transportation item, therefore we don't cover them in flood mitigation. So you have to find transportation money for them, which is weird because the culverts are the ones causing the problem, not the road, right? Anyway, so short story is the local state NRCS is trying to work with Water Management Center to get that straightened out, get it changed, get it straightened out. But in the meantime, they can't guarantee we would get funding to replace the culverts. They'll cover everything else but the culverts. So in an effort to help mitigate that cost of a couple hundred thousand dollars is what the estimate is for all the culverts that we'd replace under the driveways and the roads, we then went to the Utah Division of Emergency Management, asked them if they had any money available. They do have some money available through their pre-disaster mitigation grant program. They're willing to give us that money, but through DEM, it's a 75-25 match. So they'll give us 150 of the, of the, of the 200,000.
So question. So this would basically take all the water through culverts down Broad Hollow?
Correct. It, so we would capture the water coming out of the drainage by the tank, but where the, where the basin's being planned. We would take the water out of there. We've got a, basically a pipe that brings it down to Broad Hollow. And then there's a roadside ditch which has more benefits than just this because we're now getting a roadside channel on Broad Hollow. And we're going to replace all the culverts and the driveways. Exalt water. Hills Drive, down Oak, down Autumn Leaf and puts it back into the drainage. Concept is we're routing it around all the homes, all the flood.
Let me finish. So it comes down through the culvert, Broad Hollow. You say across Woodland Hills Drive. Are we building a culvert underneath Woodland Hills Drive? And then culverts all along Oak down to wherever the natural drainage?
Down to Autumn Leaf and then we'll turn down Autumn Leaf. So, I mean, there's, there's advantages to being able to do this for the city because we've, we've always had problems with Broad Hollow. And so now we're getting culverts. And Woodland Hills Drive has always been an issue.
It's not just Broad Hollow Street, it's Broad Hollow.
Yeah, so there's, there's multiple benefits. We've, we've talked about ways to maybe, you know, as on the last project, we, we were doing some in-kind work. It, 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 I think there's better, buy better in this project, I guess is a better way to put it, just because if, say we had some crews putting in some of the culvert project, so that's an easy one to do. Have the project buy the culvert. Have some crews put maybe some of them in, probably not all of them, and we've done our in-kind.
From the past basis, we already have this. This is the current one, but this is the past one that when, before we had the basin, this is the flood map that showed where the flooding would happen all the way down. This is the potential flooding. Now, now that we have the basin there, all of this is mitigated. This is all mitigated now from, coming from our current basin. The new basin would come over here and these are some of the drawings for that. The new basin would come over here, and these are some of the drawings for that.
So just a couple of these are modeling.
Where flooding would happen without basin.
Okay, and Carrie, I just want to let you know, we've got ten minutes before.
And I've got to head off to Elk Ridge, but.
We need to have preliminary approval for the mayor to sign the letter saying that, yes, we can do the twenty five percent match. Chris has already has already approved it. And Chris has already approved it and says that it's no problem because we have the next four cycles to get through it.
Or do in-kind.
Or in-kind, which we feel that probably with the work of the curve, it does because we get we get in-kind credit for him as a person and all of our equipment gets part of it. So I just am asking for you to please authorize the mayor to sign this letter so that we can apply for the grant.
Now, on the stipulation, though, that this doesn't exceed fifty thousand, right? I mean, that's to me, that's the big concern that.
And it's Johnson's, the ones that came up with that fifty thousand based on the twenty five thousand.
Yeah, and it could be, that's an estimate right now. Could be could be somewhere in that neighborhood, a little less or something, because we try and overestimate. But the the once the funding is, we're we're some years away from from getting this, right? So I mean, it's something we're just trying to get funding lined up for to cover this, but we're probably two or three years away from actual use of it. So we've got some time.
I just get concerned about us committing to twenty five percent when in a few years, that could mean something totally different than what it is tonight.
And and the hope above hopes is that the NRCS straightens all this out. We don't have to worry about it, but.
Yeah, because then if they can, we wouldn't have any match. So that's the thing. So that's what I'm asking for tonight.
Payson, Payson.
Has already signed their letters.
So we're getting ready to submit this on Thursday for authorisation of funding.
Again, mayor, this would just be a straw vote.
Right, yeah. We're getting really good at these straw votes, so. Okay, so I I'm guessing that we don't even do that in a council meeting, right? So what is the consensus here?
I think it makes a lot of sense, especially with a few of the other things that we're dealing with, with water issues already and culverts. If we've got to replace those anyway, now we can get seventy five percent paid. Corbett's fifty grand, just him alone, we can hit that number pretty easy. Even if it escalates from there, we can still probably hit that fairly easy. So I think I think it makes a lot of sense, especially with it paired up with the mitigation effort that we need. I know Salem's mayor has expressed concern with our tentative, maybe not with the other mitigation project. If we bail out on that, they may seek damages from us because all of that water would then be imposing on them. And so I just think this whole holistically makes a lot of sense.
Thanks, Ben.
Okay, the Salem mayor says that if we don't do Broad Hollow and Oak, that's a problem? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, I'm talking the big mitigation project. They've got concerns with that, that we have expressed potential choice not to do the big mitigation project.
Well, we already paid for that. That's not our project. That's their project. We already paid seventy thousand to that, which was what was asked.
Okay.
Yeah.
I may have misunderstood something.
And that mitigation is the big ditch that they're building right now.
At eleven two hundred in Lofer Canyon. Yep.
Okay, yeah, because I was going to say, this is this is up by the well.
Yep.
So this has nothing to do with down.
No, for me, it's this big one. The next phase of the mitigation effort is what that mayor was talking to me about.
And that mayor, we've already, as far as I know, Chris, we've already paid, we had to pay for that right after the fires. And and we kept thinking, why do we have to pay seventy thousand now? And and Corbett kind of explained that our runoff went down there, and that was our contribution. This basin then would help prevent this flow, this flow right here. This would this basin would mitigate all of these flows that we see here.
Well, but I'm looking at that and.
Look, I I don't want to interrupt this discussion because this is an informal poll. We can just talk offline and but so but I I would, I'm not going to sign anything unless I get the consensus of the council that this is something that we want to do, so.
I just I just don't know that I can I can give you an opinion by Thursday.
Well, we'd need it by Wednesday, which is tomorrow in order to do it.
I disagree with Carrie's assessment of this whole big blue part.
Well, this is what happened with our last one. It has been determined that this was our threat prior to us putting in the last basin. This is how much water that was determined. Because we have the prior basin, the right basin now, this is no longer on our flood map.
Right, and that's what I'm seeing is this.
That's this is the part that comes out of the Broad Hollow. There's two different areas. This was the map that came out of where we have the basin now off of Eagles Nest. The other that one over there is the water that would come out of the Broad Hollow Canyon.
Okay, but you'll you'll have to talk about this after. And then when if you can get your concerns addressed.
Do we have to have a unanimous vote on this, or can it be?
No, it would it would be a typical vote. So I mean, it's 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 whatever the majority of the council decides.
Well, I'm asking for you to to allow the mayor to sign that.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
Overstep. What might be a solution is to call an emergency meeting. It can be noticed if you want to take a vote on this.
Sometime between now and Thursday.
We have, you know, maybe tomorrow because we have to have it to them Thursday morning.
It could be tonight after the.
It would have to be a twenty four hour notice.
Okay.
Tomorrow night? At seven?
Put the notice up.
Hang on.
Yeah.
But it would be just an online, we wouldn't have to.
We do have a stat, a honey commission meeting at seven P M. tomorrow.
Yeah, it can't be seven.
Okay.
Be six?
Well.
It's not twenty four hours, right?
It'd have to be more like nine.
Yeah, I think that we'll have to decide that after, and then it'll have to be as late as it needs to be if that's the route we're going to go. So let's close the work session and go resume in the.
Or we could have it, we could have it early Thursday morning, too. They just, I just asked.
Do we need to vote on the road?
I believe that we will do that in the town hall meeting, which is the city council meeting, right? That's that's the way this works.
Quickly adjourn this, follow the city council meeting, take a vote.
Let's not be late. That would be bad.
Yeah, well, I don't want people waiting, so.
I don't either.
Okay, well, let's let's get in there and resume.
Yeah, we could resume in here after the town hall.